He complied through Chapter 231 Public Law 1975 entitled Open Public Meeting Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the act. Proper notice of his public meeting was provided in a notice. Said notice was posted at the entrance of the Board of Education office, mailed to the Nutley Sun, the Star Ledger, the New Jersey Herald News and the Nutley Journal, mailed to the Nutley Township Clerk, advertised in the Nutley Sun and posted on the district website. This is an official meeting. Flashing the light. I pledge allegiance to the flag of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, Mr. Kukel.
Mr. Condesella?
Here.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin? Here. Mr. Carraro?
Here.
Mr. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Riley?
Here.
Ms. Russo?
Here.
Mr. Scolera?
Here.
Mr. Spizzi?
Here.
Mr. Kazinsky?
Here.
Whereas the Board of Education will be discussing matters exempt from public discussion pursuant to NJSA 10-4-12, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education recessed to close executive session at this time to discuss instructional litigation. We have further resolved that the results of this discussion will be made public by inclusion on the agenda of a subsequent meeting of the Board of Education or when the reason for discussing such matters in closed session no longer exists. The motion, please.
Sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Mr. Spizzi.
Mr. President, make a motion to go back into the open.
Sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Apologize, folks, it's been a busy night, but we moved through this respect. We can appreciate your notice. Tonight we have a presentation from Chartwell, which is our food service. For is yours?
Thank you. Ian, can you help me? Thank you.
Excuse me, one second. Before we do that, okay? We have a brief presentation that we'd like to do to the Third Half Club. Then we can continue with the program if you don't mind, okay? Yes.
Resolution, law number administration. Be resolved that the Board of Education approves your education commemorating the 75th anniversary of the Nutley Third Half Club. Whereas on September 11, 2014, Nutley Third Half Club will celebrate 75 years as an organization. Whereas the Nutley Board of Education supports the objectives and purpose of this club to bring together socially and fraternally men and women, where graduates of Nutley High School, parents of students attending Nutley schools and all sports-minded citizens to provide incentive for participation in the field of athletics and associated activities. Whereas the Nutley Third Half Club serves numerous young people of the Nutley, New Jersey school district. And whereas the Nutley Board of Education desires to recognize the 75th anniversary of Nutley Third Half Club and its positive influence on our township's young men and women, now therefore be resolved that the Nutley Board of Education on the day of September 11, 2014, hereby congratulate the Nutley Third Half Club on its 75th anniversary celebration. Sum of things.
Thank you.
I know all of our board members would like to say something, so we'll start with Mr. Spizzi.
I'd like to thank the Third Half Club for all the hard work that they do with our kids and continue success on 75 years.
Ms. Russo.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Thursday, for all you do.
Mr. Radcliffe, I may ask you something.
I just think you guys are unbelievable. You've stuck it out for many, many years and I see a long future ahead of you and thanks for everything you do for the kids. Great job.
Ms. Dancheck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all the work.
I know he's going to be, I'd like to make a personal note, that at about 18 years old, and he's not here, he was a great guy. My uncle, my uncle Larry Vitaleti coached the Third Half Club since the origination of the National League in the 1950s. And one of the first things I learned about the Third Half Club was how to support and how to be there. He brought me as a member when I was 18, I've been there ever since. But I just want to recognize them and that my uncle was with them a long time. And truly, it's a great organization and people that came helping me get today. Sorry to say that, thank you very much.
You guys know that the resolution doesn't cover, it doesn't encompass all the work that you do. I wish my friend Charlie Pyro was here to see that because he was the person that always pushed me in the direction of the Third Half Club. And I applaud you for that. We have a plaque that we'd like to present you with. The board members, if I go forward, you can certainly do that. I know you know that their beefsteak dinner is Thursday night. I expect to see all my board members there and we'll present this again that night. Okay? Thank you, Sam Riddick.
I'd just like to say, thank you very much. If you don't know about the Third Half Club, we'll be happy to give you a lesson. But Thursday night, we'll be having our 30th beefsteak at Arts and Rep. And the four people that are behind me here play a big role in making our Third Half success. And I want to say a special thank you to your athletic director because he really helps us out to get the things that we get accomplished for our students and the district there. So it's a pleasure for us and hopefully it'll be another person to come along and carry on this role. Let's get a picture.
National game, that one moved there in its valley. There it went.
Yep.
Billy, you okay?
No, I was talking to Russ.
Thank you. Just to make it legal, folks, okay? I need to be down and spoken on that resolution.
I second that motion.
Everyone in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Chartwells, I apologize. Now the floor is yours.
No problem. Thank you. Thank you very much for inviting me here tonight. We are Chartwells, my name is Pat Alagretto and we are your food service provider. We're about to enter our sixth year, our second contract with the district. The management team for Chartwells are the following people. Lisa Lutz, she's our Director of Dining Services. She's not with us this evening, she had an emergency. But we have Kim, Kim Kay. Kim, stand up, please. She's recently promoted to Supervisor. She'll be assisting Lisa and she will be going into a Chartwells training program in order to advance with our company. She brings many talents to the district. She's great with the children, she's great with the numbers, she's great with customer service and with all your administrators, so she has a great future with us. We have Maggie Chalet, who is our high school and elementary chef. And Bobby Brokright, who's stationed at the middle school, he prepares all the meals there. My regional vice president is Nancy Quint, I'm the district manager. And then the Chartwell support team is Douglas Culp, the regional chef, Marcy Black, our regional marketing manager, and Liz Jemont, who is our regional dietitian. So I was asked to explain a little bit about some of the enhancements to the 2015 school year. One of the changes is that the USDA has changed the meal pattern one more time, but not as extreme as last year. The major change is everything must be whole-braining now. As far as rice, pasta, bread. That's not a big change, but it's a little bit of a change from what the children are used to. But we've been incorporating that for the last two years. We don't expect to see any changes in sales or anything due to that change. Also, the USDA has changed the à la carte regulations once again. They've become more restrictive on snack and beverage offerings. We brought some samples of some of the new products. We can only now sell milk, juice, water, and certain chips. And Kim has the samples here if you'd like to take a look at them or taste them later.
So we're not, we're not using, for example, data aid or Snapple?
Not allowed. We can use a Snapple product if it's 100% juice only, but the teas are all gone. Teas are all gone. You want to try it? They're actually very good.
These are good, I've had them.
Mm-hmm, they're very good.
It's been a long race over on that, probably going to be empty by then.
Aw. Another thing that we're going to introduce this year is our Chef-to-School program, which is where our chef will come in and do tastings with the children in all the grade levels. So they'll actually prepare the food, we'll set up a tasting table, and all the students, regardless of whether they purchased lunch or not, will come up and be able to taste selected items. That goes over very well with the children, they get excited about tasting new products. And then our other thing that we'd like to try this year is introduce the à la carte in the elementary school. Some of the juices and some of the chips. We currently don't offer any à la carte to the elementary students. But of course, we get the principals' buy-in and they would be part of the selection committee. Our vision. Some of the other concepts that we'd like to introduce in the new year is the Asian noodle bowl. That's basically Asian food with a lot of vegetables, the noodles, brown rice, chicken stir-fried. American classics, which is our program of basically comfort food. Mac and cheese, meatloaf, things that the children know and get at home. And then we're reinventing chicken. It's called Chicken Dipity, where we take the chicken tenders, the whole muscle meat chicken, and provide them with dipping sauces. And then there's the Water Works program, which are just the canisters with plain water with lemon or strawberries or cucumber. It's very refreshing. Another program that Chartwells would like to introduce to the district is our Nutrislice digital program. And this will do our menus, do our nutritional analysis, and do student surveys. This is brand new to Chartwells. There will be more to come on that.
When you say you want to introduce it, are you going to start that program?
Yes, we'd like to do that as soon as it's available for, it's in the test phase, but it should be rolled out shortly. And digital signage too, which would be pretty unique. And this is just some more information on your à la carte. The à la carte snacks have been changed. The new regulations, that's just a recap of the tropicana, the frito-lays, the flavored water, and the 100% fruit smoothies. In our elementary school, we'd like to really target the elementary to increase participation there. And we'd like to do that through the programs I spoke about, Chicken Dipity, Asian Nation, continue to offer fresh fruit and vegetables, focus on locally grown initiatives because we do use the farms, our major supplier uses the farms in the area. The Chef-to-School tastings. We also have the character visits, which are, there's one of them up there. It's actually a turtle. And it's a costume and the turtle would come to the elementary school and talk about nutrition with the children. It gets them excited. Our Simply Good Promotions, which is also other nutritional information. And we do provide nutritional education materials for the classroom that we can discuss with the principals and see if they like, if they're interested in distributing it. Any questions?
I have one question and I kind of know the answer already, but I'm still disturbed by it. I've been lucky enough, unlucky enough to have lunch at all grammar schools. And I see quite a few of the meals are thrown away when they're not used. And if they're in those Starphone containers, they have to get rid of them. And I understand that that's some kind of a law. We couldn't, what I'm asking you is, is there any chance, for example, that they could be given to the senior citizen housing at the end of that meal day?
What we can do, I know what we can do, the state allows...
Untouchable.
Right. The state allows a share table?
Well, you know.
No, I understand. We would have to get some kind of waiver or agreement. I know that in New York, there's a special program that allows districts to do that, but of course, there's no liability because God forbid if the food wasn't handled properly with the distribution to those senior citizens and someone got sick, there would have to be some kind of waiver that the district or Chartwells wouldn't be responsible for that.
Can we take a look at that?
We've had conversation about this before. The capacity because of liability.
Is that it?
We could do a share table on other items such as milk or apples or things that, you know, are contained. The state will allow that and you could set up, you know, a basket. Other children are hungry and they want to take an additional fruit or milk or other item. That's a possibility too for the students.
No, I think he was stuffing his leftovers. Yeah.
No, I understand what you're saying about that.
So leftover without a cost? Like the milk and the...
Yeah, because if a child takes, say the child, because you have to take a vegetable or a fruit for the meal to be considered a reimbursable meal. And obviously, you don't have to take milk, but they take their milk. If they don't want it for whatever reason, they could put a share table out and that food could be reused. You know, another child that may want an additional fruit or if you have hungry children, sometimes we give it to the nurses. Kids that don't come to school with any food, we've done that. And the state allows that.
Do we have to, we have to discuss that with you or do we, are we fully setting it up ourselves?
We have to discuss that internally because that obviously makes it appear that they were not observed taking.
Right, we'd have to have a conversation about it, but it is allowable.
Okay.
Okay, that's it. Open the questions.
We're fine.
Look forward to another successful five years. With a great district.
One of our board members was hoping you brought some of the, what did you want, Sal?
Sal wanted Jordan's cookies and things.
No, they wanted the Yohanna, I thought they'd go...
Oh, the Parfaits.
Yes, the Parfaits, we're outstanding.
You know, what's your next meeting?
Oh, sorry, Mr. Radcliffe.
I just, I just want to say that 10 years ago, when I first got on the board, we, we were not privatized at that time. And it's important for the public to understand that the following three years, we lost $130,000 as a district on our lunches. Then the following year, we lost $180,000. Two years later, we lost $280,000 a year. Then we as a board decided to privatize the food service, which was not a popular thing to do at the time. Because then the food service hired their own personnel. And since then, we haven't lost one dime. And I think it's great and I think Chartwells has done a great job and I thank you for it and it just gets better and better, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good point.
Thank you very much.
Make a motion. Stay in office.
I make a motion. Make a motion, we might, we might, we dispense with these.
Mr. Lozery.
Thank you, Mr. Kazinsky. I want to again thank, and I've only been here three years, but working for the Third Half Club. It really, from generation to generation, 75 years, from organization to support. The whole, the whole district truly, with certainly the athletic programs, this is a wonderful thing. Also, with Chartwell, just to add to what Mr. Radcliffe said, it's not even just that we, district, again, I wasn't here when we made the decision to sign the contract. It's not that we have lost money, the district has actually earned money by doing what we do. We can pay a certain amount every year depending on profits, on top of the fact that Chartwells has made specific investments into our system. So thank you very much as always.
Thank you, Russ. We had a great year last year, we made $70,000 for the district last year in return.
So it's coming back to the district.
That we can reinvest into the program, which is great.
Thank you. As always, thank you. It's a great thing to make sure people recognize. Couple things just to point out. Before schooling, we had our middle and high school orientations. Week of the 25th, it was terrific to get students back in the building. There's certainly a different energy and a different approach to some of the things that we're going through. If you walk through high school, you see the activities the kids are engaged in. Or if you walk to middle school and watch Mr. Stoffler in his shorts, rolling around the students on the floor, making sure that we're a building team. And the houses were excited. We have video of such, which will be available on the website. But it really just is crazy, our teachers are holding up their sleeves and we've had a wonderful opening. I think certainly the building and grounds department, it had a difficult summer in the sense that we had opened our facilities to so many programs to support the township and the district. And they got everything shipshape with all the actual work that's been done and all the programs up in the buildings. A big thanks to Mr. Nicolet and all the men in building the grounds, men and women in building the grounds. Our administration faculty and staff, we came in for a great single day professionally. I think we got set off on the right foot and had a great kickoff to school, got some terrific feedback from students and from staff. So we're off to a good start 2014-15. Do want to highlight the fact that our administrators did accept following Mr. Kazinsky and Mr. Zara, the Ice Club challenge. And the first day, which was a staff day, we did take 15 minutes out of our schedule to get together and just raise awareness again of not just that clause, but of all the different clauses our students could get behind. So it's a wonderful thing. Just to reiterate with the board, as prescribed by law, we are 100% compliant in our skip teams, which are the leadership teams in the buildings now. And I met separately, Mrs. Christian Tell and Dr. Bellani. I met with the high school and middle school and then we all went together to go over the updated evaluation system and all the current requirements. And again, that translated into what came out during faculty meetings and yes, but overall it was a good meeting. I want to thank all the board members, certain members of the public, as well as our architect and demographer helping out last Thursday. I want to make sure the public understands, the entire presentation is video. Thanks to Mr. Biamister for getting it on the website along with the actual presentation. As a reminder, one of the communities involved in our schools, open houses have been scheduled in each building in the next two weeks. They are available on the website, on the district calendar. Trying to tweet out as much as possible, add to our Facebook. Talking to the PTOs, middle school open houses Wednesday the 10th. Elementary school open houses all on Wednesday the 17th. And high school open house is scheduled for September Thursday the 18th with freshman parents meeting 6:30 prior to the full beginning of the open house at 7:00. Again, with Mr. Williams. Re-registration, we talked about. Thanks again to Mr. Biamister and the members of the board ad hoc committee. But we are prepared tomorrow to open up the online system. Letters will be going out to parents across the district and we are asking for the support and cooperation of every parent as we do what is necessary to ensure that every student who isn't on Nutley Schools is in fact an appropriate Nutley, sorry, a Nutley student resides in district. Want to point out again, as always, thank the roadrunner prior to this, but on October 1st, Wednesday, they're having the annual dinner where they welcome our new staff members. Swabs, all the board members are invited. And our new staff members, letters were sent out today. So hopefully they can come on in order and they're allowed to bring a guest. It's a wonderful evening where they meet members of the community. And again, just another example of how here and now we have multiple ways of supporting the district and the larger township, so thanks to them. Also, Thursday, correct, is our Third Half Club dinner. I'll make sure the board is aware of that. Professional development, we didn't waste any time kicking that off. Our first language arts PD, we're scheduled for the 11th and the 12th. K-6 and 7A teachers getting together, continuing to work, including refreshment and running records, which also helps hopefully set us up for consistent assessment, which is what we're talking about as a major goal for this year. Another piece, Mr. Riley and his client performing arts department working with the mayor's office, Nutley clergy, in conjunction with all this to bring together what's called pathways, pathways for peace. We're having a celebration on Sunday, September 21st. Our students and we're inviting everyone in the community to come out. They're striking down a portion frankly, it's going to be a wonderful day. We have international students and faculty joining us for that day just to celebrate the idea that there's a larger picture than just Nutley. And our students live in a world that's multicultural. It's going to be a wonderful, wonderful day. I'm hoping to bring my family and encourage everybody else in the public to do the same. As a facilities update, we know that there have been a number of projects going on. I'm happy to report that Radcliffe and Lincoln Schools have been stripped so that those, the wonderful new black tops are now almost 100% complete, but they've been useful since prior to opening the school. The Lincoln School office, I was waiting here for Mr. Nicolet, but we've done that. I believe we received the full seal today that the security door is 100% intact and the office has been functioning since before school started. So again, thanks for those pieces. Work on the roof, the high school roof continues. Fire doors have been all completed. And if you walk down Franklin Avenue and notice that the ovals look almost brand new, and I say almost because we have one more step to take. They're waiting for the last column to be fixed, which was not part of the initial project, but they want that to be fixed so that any debris and dirt that comes out doesn't affect the look of the oval. We should be ready for our own opener on the 19th, we're excited about that. As for technology, Mr. Biamister, Ms. Levine and our tech crew have done a fantastic job of getting everything up and ready for this year. We have a ton of new technology, a wealth of resources that students didn't have in June, they have this year, teachers as well, and we look forward for them to be used effectively in the classroom. Again, as I mentioned, the open house stage on the website, Pathways to Peace the 21st. And our ESF bilingual parent advisory committee, first meeting will be October 8th from 5:30 to 7:00 at the high school, that's awesome.
Thank you, Mr. Lozery. Any committee reports? Hearing those citizens, we now come to the portion of our reading where we allow members of the public to address the board in this section. We allow questions or comments on all the resolutions addressed in tonight's agenda. Our board regulation number 601 allows 20 minutes for discommunication. Each person to be limited to three minutes. So we ask you to try to stay within these requirements. Speakers may speak more than once only after all others wishing to speak on topic given hurry. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, all may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, irrelevant or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to always state your name and address each and every time you address the board, the first person that can step forward. Hearing none, we will take the resolutions. Mrs. Dancheck, please academics.
I would guess, Mr. President, I'd love to move academic president's vote if she was written.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Condesella?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin? Yes. Mr. Carraro?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Scolera?
Yes.
Mr. Spizzi?
Yes.
Ms. Kazinsky?
Yes. We're going to skip the administration resolution because we've already done it. Finance, Mr. Spizzi.
Yes, Mr. President, I look for finance resolutions, 1 through 9 as written.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Condesella?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Carraro?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Scolera?
Yes.
Mr. Spizzi?
Yes.
Ms. Kazinsky?
Yes, Mr. Spizzi, will you take resolution number 10, please?
Yes. Finance resolution number 10. Approve payment towards settlement, TRITEC litigation. Be resolved that the Board of Education approves the payment of $465,000 towards the settlement of the TRITEC litigation, provided that documents necessary in the opinion of a legal counsel to the board are executed, filed and executed.
Mark, second. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Condesella?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Carraro? Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Scolera?
Yes.
Mr. Spizzi?
Yes.
Ms. Kazinsky?
Yes. Mr. Klein, will you take the personal resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I look at personal resolution, want to have it.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Condesella?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck-Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Carraro?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Riley?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Scolera?
Yes.
Mr. Spizzi?
Yes.
Ms. Kazinsky?
Yes.
Want to take out two before we stop to recognize Mrs. Villia who delivered the camera. But her family, her family, her children donated once again on a number of laptops to be used for construction purposes, so we greatly accept it. And thank you very much.
In this section, we allow questions or comments on all school-related matters. Our regulations allow 30 minutes for discommunication. Again, each person should be limited to three minutes. We ask you to try to stay within these requirements. As I stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me. First person wishing to come forward. First person wishing to come forward. Being none, any old business to come before the board? Any new business to come before the board? Whereas the Board of Education will be discussing matters exempt from public discussion pursuant to NJSA 10-4-12, now therefore be resolved, the Board of Education recesses to close executive session at this time to discuss student matters. Be it further resolved that the results of this discussion will be made public by inclusion on the agenda of a subsequent meeting of the Board of Education or when the reason for discussing such matters in closed session no longer exists. Motion.
Sir, Mr. McCallum?
In favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.